Welcome. I'd like to call to order the March 2nd, 2023 Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. My name is Jeremy Hooper. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. The time is four o'clock on the dot. I will point out that we do have eight board members with us tonight, which constitutes quorum. We're able to conduct some business, and let's have each of them introduce themselves, beginning with Bruce Semenon.
Bruce Semenon.
Paul Roberts.
Sonia Rothstein.
Louise Macura.
David Alzamora.
Jack Farrell.
Matt Jones.
We also welcome three staff liaisons with us today, Alex Cameron, Maria Carpenter, and Alfred Cassidy. Welcome, everyone, and thanks for joining us. On our agenda tonight, we do have three public hearings for proposed text amendment changes to the PDO. If anyone wishes to sign up and speak to any of those public hearings, we do have signup sheets in the back. Please just make sure you sign up appropriately to the one that you do want to speak on. I'll also mention that we do ask that we keep all comments to three minutes or below, and any redundancies, we just ask to refrain from redundancies of other speakers. And those three text amendment proposals tonight are first, the planned community neighborhoods and neighborhood lodging accommodations. We're going to discuss retaining walls in the second one, and in the third, land use for temporary rental recreational vehicles that would be allowed in public conservation districts. Those are our three tonight. I will mention that we hope to get to some sort of recommendation for council on all three. We believe that we will. I want to make sure that I preface the word recommendation there. So as a board, our recommendations are purely that to council. They are the legislative body. They can take our recommendations partly, in whole, or none at all. So our decisions today are not binding, purely a recommendation to council. So with that, I will turn it over to Alex.
Chair, do we want to take care of the approval of minutes? I'm as anxious to get started, too, but just give me just a brief.
We've got to forgive me. It's an important meeting. I'm very anxious to get ahead. So let's go ahead and back up a second to approval of minutes. Can I get?
I move to approve the minutes of February 2nd.
Okay.
anxious. So we do have a motion made by Louise and a second made by Sonia to approve the minutes from the February 2nd, 2023 regular meeting for the Planning and Zoning Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved for the regular meeting of February 2nd, 2023. Then I'll turn it over to staff. And do we need any comments before, or would you rather go ahead and move forward into the public hearing?
Leave her ready.
All right.
If you would like to open the floor for a motion to move in public hearing, we'll get going.
With that, I'll open up the floor for a motion to move into, exit our regular meeting and move into a public hearing.
Move to exit our regular meeting and enter our public hearing.
Got a motion made by David and a second made by Jack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have exited our regular meeting and we have entered into a public hearing for planned community neighborhoods and neighborhood lodging accommodations. Alex?
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing, as Jeremy just stated, is to consider text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance or the PDO, and bear with us, there's going to be a lot of acronyms throughout the day, which would create a new land use as well as other associated definitions to that land use. And those amendments would be to the following sections of the PDO. Section 8.5, the Table of Permitted and Special Uses and Special Requirements. Section 8.6, Special Requirements to the Table of Permitted Special Uses and Special Requirements, and Section 10.2, Definitions. So a little bit more about the text amendment process, and this will cover the basis for all three of the public hearings this evening, so we won't bother to get into that with the remaining two agenda items today. But zoning ordinances or the maps or development regulations which may be adopted, amended, or repealed, and the purpose of initiating changes or making adjustments or evaluations are necessary because of changed conditions, newly or recently adopted plans or public policy, or the overarching general opportunity to advance the general welfare of the village. You can see Section 1.2 of the PDO, which kind of goes into a little bit more overarching detail there. These such amendments may be initiated by the governing board, village council, this planning and zoning board, village staff, or anyone who owns property resides in the jurisdiction or their authorized agent. So the process, the planning and zoning board by state statute is required to hold a public hearing, and within that public hearing that is duly advertised, the planning and zoning board makes a recommendation to village council. You guys are an advisory board, so the recommendation is advisory only, and it's not binding. Any actions that come from a recommendation from this board do not enact, repeal, or amend any of the zoning regulations. The recommendation should be made within 30 days, and that is statutorily. If a recommendation does not come out of the local planning and zoning board within 30 days, then the governing board may decide to take up the proposal. They're not required to, but they may. Also, in coming to your recommendation, you should consider the recommendation by village staff as well as the recently adopted comprehensive plan and comment on whether or not the proposed amendments are or are not consistent with that plan. After the planning and zoning board makes their formal recommendation, then the governing board has their opportunity and must hold a public hearing, which is also advertised in the same manner, and after conducting the hearing, they have the opportunity to act on that recommendation or the proposal and take in the recommendation made by the planning and zoning board and consistency with the comprehensive plan as well. Okay, a little bit of background about this specific public hearing request and text amendment. Of course, we all have just kind of recently come out of all the discussions revolving and surrounding the debate over short-term rentals or STRs. Out of those discussions, a different sort of type of lodging use by using single-family homes within residential communities or specific residential neighborhoods had arose. There were some distinctions that were made and commented on by way of the process of how these neighborhoods were established, set up, how rules, how restrictions, how things were managed, and those areas are defined as quote-unquote "planned communities." So these amendments would create a new land use, neighborhood lodging accommodation, within a planned community neighborhood, both of which are defined with these text amendments. Governance of these planned community neighborhoods are handled by the declarations, which are what create and set forth the organization of those planned community neighborhoods, and they are recorded with the local register of deeds, are actually required to. And so therefore, any property owners or future property owners who buy into these planned communities have made aware of and have knowledge of such rules, regulations, and these declarations. And these declarations may be amended, but would require the supermajority vote of 67% of all lot owners. The areas are managed by some sort of governing body, as we have proposed a definition of as a master's association or other association, and allows for some form of a self-governance within the planned community neighborhood. And based on the comments that have been received during those discussions around short-term rentals, it's, there's a feeling that this could lead to a significant decrease and some of the adverse effects that have been attributed to some of the short-term rentals within other non-planned community neighborhoods. And a little bit of a basis of where some of these definitions and proposals with these text amendments have come from, have come from North Carolina General Statute 47-F, or known as Planned Community Act, which does govern the creation, operation, and the deconstruction of these type of planned communities. So going to get, dial into more on the proposal or the text amendments. Also going to highlight some very minor changes from the proposals that have been included in your guys' agenda item that was released last week, and they will be highlighted here by using the red underlined strike-through format. So we're going to start off with planned community neighborhood, and this is, again, largely mirrors the definition within the state statute. "A contiguous area containing at least 20 acres or 20 dwelling units included within a planted subdivision or condominium development for which any person or corporation by virtue of ownership of a lot or dwelling unit within the planned community neighborhood is by declaration governed by a master's association with powers to enforce and adopt and amend first change, just bylaws, not declaration." Planned community neighborhood can't do that. Takes the 67% majority again. "The bylaws, rules, and regulations which property owners within the planned community neighborhood are obligated to pay real property taxes, insurance premiums, or other expenses to maintain, improve, or benefit other lots of common area, other real estate described in the declaration." Also, the Planned Community Act was enacted in 1999, so what we've tried to do to allow for the ability for these definitions to apply for those communities that were enacted prior to the Planned Community Act says that it also involves those who were created before that act by, in which the planned community by an affirmative vote or written agreement by the lot owners at that 67% supermajority, say that we will be governed under that statute as well. The declaration, again, this is the document that kind of creates and set forth the organization of the planned community neighborhood, defined as any instruments, however denominated, that create the planned community neighborhood. One minor change from what you guys have seen, and any amendments to those instruments. That is exactly from the statute. Continuing on definitions, the neighborhood lodging accommodation. Okay, so here's the new use that's defined. "It's a lodging use of a dwelling unit within the planned community neighborhood where the dwelling unit is leased, offered, or made available by short-term lease or other financial consideration for a time period or lease term less than 30 consecutive days, which is allowed through that declaration or other governing documents, and is authorized or managed through the master's association within the planned community neighborhood." "Master's associations, the nonprofit organization established per the statute by declaration or its common law equivalent, or other nonprofit organization formed prior to the Planned Community Act, and referenced in a declaration with powers to enforce and amend, remove declaration, because they don't have the authority to amend declarations, bylaws, rules, and regulations pursuant to the Planned Community Act statutes, and/or by declaration or other governing documents as responsible to maintain the maintenance of the common property and manage all of those neighborhood housing or lodging accommodations within the planned community neighborhood." All right, from here, now that we've gotten all that out of the way, at least for now, the next proposed amendments are going to be to the Table of Permitted and Special Uses. So we're all too familiar with this, administrative staff and this board, based on recent hearings that we've had and work sessions we've had with you. So what you're going to do is you're going to see a proposed X seated on the table in the same row of the new lodging, neighborhood lodging accommodation use. The X will be where it's permitted, we're proposing to permit it by right, with a comma SR for special requirement, special requirement 10. And the proposal includes allowing the neighborhood lodging accommodation in all our typical single-family residential neighborhood districts. So if you focus there on the blue teal color row, neighborhood lodging accommodation seated at the bottom of the lodging uses, permitted by right with special requirement with the R210, R30, R20, R15, R10, R8, R5, RMF, the residential multifamily, and the VR, Village Residential District. Special requirement 10. What this would do, if these amendments are passed, it would relocate an existing SR10, which is for dry cleaning and laundry services, to the next available spot down the list, which would be SR23. SR10 for neighborhood lodging accommodation would state that any neighborhood lodging accommodation shall be required to obtain a development permit from the village, or any of the lawful already existing non-conforming uses prior to the adoption of ordinance 2215 last October, get a non-conforming use certificate, and that they have to comply with the following standards. The first standards are referenced in SR9 for the short-term rentals. That was provided in the staff report for context. That's around the safety, minimum housing, I think occupancy, parking, et cetera. The submission of documentation, and we've recently just taken out the contact information. If we have an application, we're going to have an applicant and owner and a contact on that application, that the neighborhood lodging accommodation is located within the Planned Community Act as defined in Section 10. So staff is going to need documentation showing that they are a neighborhood lodging accommodation meeting the requirements in that definition, and they are part of a planned community neighborhood. The submission of the documentation that that neighborhood lodging accommodation has been authorized by the declarations of the planned community neighborhood, which should be recorded within the register of deeds. Finally, this was discussed at somewhat of a detail with this board in previous work session. Insulation of a landscape screen per the correct sighting of reference this time, Ordinance Section 9524, which is, would be applied to the adjacent property line of a neighborhood lodging accommodation of a residential use where it borders an area that is not part of the planned community neighborhood. Okay, so I'm sure we're going to have a lot more discussion on those items that I just breezed through with a lot of, a lot of words and terminology, but just kind of getting to what the Planning and Zoning Board's options are after conducting of the hearing and having the opportunity to discuss with staff and after receiving your public comment on the proposal. The board can decide to continue the public hearing if the board, or majority of the board feels that more information or input is needed on the proposal. You can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments of drafted. You can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments with revisions to those sections that I just glanced over with you all, or you can also recommend rejection of those proposed amendments. And in doing so, again, you have to comment on the plan consistency. So staff has provided a draft statement of consistency with the 2019 comprehensive plan, which does set aside seven guiding principles. Guiding principle three, places to live, recommends that the village should do what they can to protect and enhance the quality and character of existing residential neighborhoods. And additionally, there was a section in there titled "To Address Short-Term Rentals," meaning that the village should continue to monitor the statutory landscape and abilities within, on regulations and the impacts of those short-term rentals within the existing single-family neighborhoods. And again, this is sort of, came about from the discussions that were held last summer and last fall. Village council, of which adopted ordinance 2215, which addressed the use of short-term rentals within the existing single-family neighborhoods. Staff does feel that after working with council and having some work sessions with this board, that these proposed amendments are consistent with guiding principle three of the 2019 comprehensive plan, and continues to try to evolve and address the use of single-family dwellings within single-family residential neighborhoods as short-term rentals or as lodging uses. So with that, I will conclude with the staff recommendation. No surprise here, following the statement I just made, that staff recommends the board do consider recommending approval of the proposed amendments to village council and adopt the statement of plan consistency provided.
Thank you, Alex. So before we move into public comment, do we have any questions for Alex that may pertain to, before we get into heavy discussion, may pertain to definitions, any sort of clarity that you may need as a board or anything? Feel free to ask.
I was just going to make a comment on special requirement 1C, submission of documentation that the Neighborhood Lodging Association has been authorized by the declaration. I would just recommend editing that to make it plural, submission of documentation that neighborhood lodging accommodations have been authorized by the declaration. That way, they're allowed, you know, as a whole, you're not just limiting it to the one, because I assume if the individual is bringing that application forward, if they're allowed as a whole, it doesn't matter. It's not approving the one, it's that the declaration just allows them, period.
And I have no problem with that, and I did kind of glance over and all the talking I was just doing. One of the changes that we kind of have thought more about since the releasing of the agenda packet, we feel that we may not even need C, as you see there, I do have it strike through. Most of it is because we don't think it's really within staff's purview to really know what those rules and regulations are that are governing that type of use. It's just the fact that we get submission of documentation proving this a planned community neighborhood and proving that the declarations allow for a neighborhood lodging accommodation. Because the whole discussion or argument that these type of uses should be allowed within a planned community neighborhood is that there is that opportunity for that self-management, that self-governance within the planned community. But I think staff would be willing to hear a recommendation either way on that, whether completely removing or with those suggestions.
I guess it would be D on there, but C on what we have here. So it's the same, C is still stricken. It's submission of documentation that neighborhood lodging accommodations have been authorized by the declaration. So saying that the declaration just allows them within that master association.
Okay, so the C that we have now, no suggested edits, then does that?
Slightly different.
Yeah, so, and one in front of you I've got ready.
Yeah, so the one in front of us, cross out V, add a S to accommodation, and then instead of has, it would be have.
Okay. Thank you.
Alex, I just know this has been a topic of conversation between this board as well as council, just to go ahead and get this out there. The changes, I guess, have been made, or staff feels the changes have been made, where the definition of the planned community neighborhood now would apply to the Planned Community Act of 1999 and how it would state to Chapter 47-F. Right, so those changes, you've made them relative and all-encompassing of all.
And based on the discussions that staff has had, and that was one of the big questions or items of consideration, is how do we make sure that this can apply to any planned communities that may have been established prior to the Planned Community Act? And we feel like this certainly gives any of those communities that were established prior to that, if it doesn't meet it outright, it gives them the opportunity to make those adjustments within, to be governed by the Planned Community Act.
Alex, can I just, just so I understand this, just, I guess, be a little elementary and use an example? Because your voice is very relaxing, sometimes I miss things. But, so you have a planned, planned community neighborhood, okay, defined by, it's got a registered bylaws or declaration, it's got an association that manages that, okay? If you wanted to either sustain or move towards initiate the ability to have short-term rentals, 67% of the homeowners needed to vote in favor of that, property owners needed to vote in favor of that. Is that correct?
Because the declaration itself would have to allow for that neighborhood lodging accommodation, and declarations by the Planned Community Act do require the supermajority vote.
Okay, okay. If it does not right now, just community X, you know, gated community, you know, has an HOA.
If they wanted to amend those to allow.
They want to amend them, the owners, not the board of directors, but the owner, property owners, need to be 67% in favor of implementing short-term rentals.
Correct, because again, it would have to be incorporated within the declaration.
Yep, yep, okay.
Or neighborhood lodging accommodations.
See, there, David was paying attention.
Would the declarations have to specifically use those words, you know, the neighborhood lodging accommodation in the declaration?
It would just have to meet that definition that we've included in. That's sort of like a local terminology that we've created. It would just have to be that they allow for a lodging use of a dwelling unit within a planned community neighborhood where the...
Okay, so what's the definition of short-term rental again? Less than how many days?
It's between 14 and 30, basically.
No, it's not less than 30, it's less than 31.
I don't have it in front of me, but...
No, I'm saying the definition we have here.
Oh, no, it says...
Sitting right there.
Yeah.
Less than 30 consecutive days, so less than 30 means 29 or less.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's, our short-term rental definition doesn't say 30 or less, does it?
It doesn't.
Don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, because it just, remember, we, well, you may not remember from back in September and so forth, but it was up to 14 days, because there's IRS considerations and others, so it wouldn't meet the definition of a short-term rental.
So the declarations that are approved by a minimum of two-thirds of the owners or units or people that are eligible to vote, and it could be the developer who still has a number of votes, depending upon the situation, they have to change their declaration, and the declaration has to be recorded in the recorder of deeds. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And that's based on the statute, and we're just codifying that within our definitions.
I just, I just want to ask a question, just for my information. What, do you have a guess at what percentage residential districts are in associations, master associations now?
Long list.
Yeah, at a very minimum, and what we tried to do was allow for any that are, that could meet that definition to have the ability to come into compliance this way, or any future new ones that would like to, could. So we tried to be broad, but I know we talked, or Jack even had some sort of a rough draft of a list one time when we met with this board, but...
So you have a list of all, of all the associations?
Yeah, we have some sort of an idea. Obviously, a lot of them have been around for quite a while.
Right, right.
And some might call themselves an association, but not by definition of the statute.
Right.
I mean, there's a handful, because again, it could cover condos, it could cover, you know, the two larger gated communities, Pinewild, CCNC, it could, any of the more recent subdivisions that, again, that are more than 20 units or 20 lots, that we've, we know have gone through the subdivision process recently, that any new ones that may come out, there's...
Hollycrest.
Yeah, Hollycrest is probably the most recent tangible one that we can think of, where this board has actually acted on.
Off-ramp townhomes.
That's another one that's got 40 units, the Royal Oak Townhomes, which are off Murdicksville.
Pires Trace Des and so forth and so on. I thought the list, I didn't bring the list with me, I think it was like 30 or so, close to 30.
I just have one other question, simple. The supermajority in voting, is that of all the members of the association or those that are voting? Because in my experience, you're not going to get more than, if you get 25% of those homeowners voting, that would be a lot. So is it 67% of the who votes, or do they have to go out knocking on doors to get somebody?
It's of all lot owners.
No, Louise is right. I mean, it's a struggle to get two-thirds of the eligible lot owners or unit owners, however you describe it, to vote, just to pay attention.
Right.
So this is not a trivial matter to change the declarations.
No, it's not, and that's why I was just asking if that...
67% of the votes that are allocated, so I read that as available, yeah.
It'd be hard for almost anybody to get that 67%.
And so that plays into the argument that, well, that community has asked for that. They have whole or supermajority of them, a two-thirds majority, have agreed to enact or amend or change whatever declaration is, whether it's a neighborhood lodging accommodation or it's to have only one type of mailbox that's allowed. I mean, that might be some, you know, just maybe a poor example, maybe that's more in the bylaws or covines, but something similar to that nature. Exterior materials, I don't, you know.
We kind of moved into the debate phase.
Yeah, and I was, and with all three of these text amendments or these public hearing items today, you know, the village, either through village council or through village staff, has initiated these, so we are in essence the applicant, so it might be more beneficial to kind of hit maybe the top end of the questions for clarity and then move into the public comment.
Yep. So with any more questions, will we go ahead and move into public comment?
I've got one more question, and I don't mean to, you know, run down a rabbit hole, but it hinges upon what Jack had brought up. You know, I think of a fully developed community, you know, people living there, owners other than, you know, the contractor who may own greater than 50% of the lots, you know, if they're going to vote to paint every house pink, that's up to them, you know, good on them, you know? But when homeowners don't have control because lots, the majority of lots are still in development or being owned by someone who doesn't really have stake there, was there any, I guess my question would be, as the staff looked at this, was there any consideration brought up or discussion that occurred in regards to a new planned community in development where the contractor still does own, you know, he has the supermajority and really has no intention to live there or could really care a whole lot after he walks away from it?
So let me try to answer your question by starting with a question of my own, just to make sure I've gotten it, because I'm pretty sure this is, this is the other main item that we discussed a lot as a board when we had our work sessions. So hypothetical situation, you've got whatever subdivision or whatever we're looking at here, greater than 20 acres, 20 lots, so we've got 40 home, developers... here, greater than twenty acres, twenty lots, so we've got forty home, developers still developing, building the lots there, however, four of them have finished and have sold and four new happy residents are there in the community. And now the developer who still has the supermajority amends these laws after they had already, those four residents bought into, knowing what they're buying into, now they're changed, but they're, they're forced to have to accept it because they're not the majority owner. Is that like a similar situation, what you're?
That's correct.
Okay, so we did think a lot about that, again, based on a lot of the discussions that we had at one of the work sessions with this group. And, you know, we don't have any other way to, because anything could be changed in that matter, whether it be to paint your house pink or whether it be to, you know, become age restricted. We really don't have any way of really providing that added oversight, and if that's the desire of that community, of the majority of that community, even though it's a developer, I don't know how we can get involved.
I think that's definitely going to be a point of discussion today, so we'll take that as the answer at this point in time, and let's go ahead and move on into public comment, if that's okay. Lynn Goldhammer, would you please, welcome Lynn, would you just please state your name to make sure I have it correctly and your address, please?
Lynn Goldhammer, 11 Salem Lane, Pinehurst. Who came up with this idea? Does anyone know? Was it an actual, single-family home resident in Pinehurst that came up with this idea?
Lynn, you'll have to forgive us, the interaction back and forth, we're accepting your comments, so we're very appreciative of it from that standpoint, but I think in short.
I guess I'm really, I had no idea this was even going on, and I got a hunch ninety-nine percent of the population of Pinehurst has no idea it's going on. It seems to me we just passed some sort of ordinance that we couldn't create any more short-term rentals, didn't we? And I ask that because I'm, maybe I'm missing something. So it looks like they want to create an opportunity to mass produce short-term rentals after we said you can't do that. And it seems to me what's going to happen with stuff like this is the developers are going to come in, they'll build a hundred units, keep thirty-three, so you have sixty-seven residential things, and they're going to be making a whole lot of money over time by basically circumventing the rules we just created that you can't have any more short-term rentals. And meanwhile, Pinehurst is trying to do this over at their, one of their golf courses and putting like eight new short-term rental places and then using as an excuse that they can do that because there's not going to be a kitchen in the buildings, which to me, did I lose you? There we are. I can buy a house and take out the stove and use it as a short-term rental as long as there's not a stove there. I mean, we're coming up with all these weird little things, and also I can think of is how are we, the tax-paying citizens of Pinehurst, better off because something like this is created? People who moved here, moved to Pinehurst for what it is, not for what some developer's vision is, and I feel like we're losing it. We're losing Pinehurst, we're losing Southern Pinehurst, we're losing all of Moore County. Do you realize we're now considered an urban area because there's a hundred thousand homes in Moore County? How many people moved here wanting to be in an urban area? And did we ever get a vote on that? Did anyone say, are you willing to have this? Do you want this? We never really got a say. A few years ago, we had this Planapalooza that I call a Scamapalooza, where they wanted to put in, we got an urban planner to come in and do this, and they wanted to put in three new downtown business districts. And meanwhile, nobody in Pinehurst was saying, you know what we need? We need another downtown business districts, we need more high-density housing. No one said that, no one wanted that, but they went along with it. And I don't think there's really a clear idea of how can you oppose it. So I mean, I can come here and talk to you, but no one else is really here, and there's not going to be any real thing put out to the community, but it seems like they, they get people riled up behind the scenes when the short-term rental thing was, they were getting everyone riled up, you know, all these people are coming in and you're going to have all these strangers in your neighborhood and they're not going to be involved in the community and they're not going to be real, real members and we're losing that and it's driving prices up and blah, 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 and yeah, okay. So then they get everybody riled up so that they'll go along with ending short-term rentals so that the developers can have them and Pinehurst Corporation can have them, but we, the people, can't. Is this what you moved here to Pinehurst for? Just because someone wants to do this doesn't mean we ever have to go along with it, we should be able to say, you know what, we just passed the no short-term rental thing slash it's not an option. And if you're really doing your jobs as planning and zoning, your job is to maintain the planning and zoning, maintain the zoning. Don't keep selling parts, giving parts of Pinehurst away to Aberdeen so they can circumvent the five acres to build and put in a hundred and eleven units on Linden Road. That's not following zoning, that's circumventing zoning. We're losing control of this town, of this whole county, every town in this county is really losing control. And I don't think people are going to like what the future is. I remember even seeing this starting to happen when I moved here eight years ago, and I said, you know, you've got to find your next nice place to live because Pinehurst isn't going to be it for very long. If this, if you're in Pinehurst because you like Pinehurst, it's your job to stop this stuff. And if you don't want to keep Pinehurst what it is, you shouldn't be on the zoning and zoning board.
Lynn, we've gone over, but I'm very, thank you very much.
Respectfully, we're all in Pinehurst because of the vision of a developer roughly a hundred and twenty or so years ago.
Please refrain. Isabel Maddox, please, welcome, if you'll just state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Isabel Maddox, Hill Box 946, Raleigh 27602. I'm here today representing Country Club of North Carolina, and in response to the last speaker's comments, I think the reason for this proposal is to allow short-term rentals in neighborhoods which are very much protected, so they don't, they don't have a lot of impacts on the town at large. And CCNC is one of those communities where there are a lot of buffers, the roads are private, there, the lots tend to be large, we're not going to have the same impacts you would have if you have a small house in the middle of the village as a short-term rental. And so CCNC has been here a lot longer than eight years. In fact, they've had a rental program in place for over sixty years, and it's really important, both operationally and financially, to that organization. We appreciate the planning staff for bringing this text change forward, and I think it's a, you know, I think you need to look at sort of all sizes, and you pass the overall rule, but when we spoke at that public hearing, there was some understanding by council that maybe we needed to look at these types of communities in a separate action, so that's what's happening now, and I appreciate it. As to the proposal on the table, I generally like it. I think for CCNC, there needs to be a few tweaks, because CCNC covenants, some of them go back to the sixties, and they, they certainly don't mention any of these definitions, you know, exactly, because those did not exist. They prohibit rentals except with permission of the CCNC board. So the way that works is the board has developed a rental program, and within certain confines, which are very tight, they can, they can, you know, if you sign up for the rental program, you can participate in that, but you have to, I mean, a member has to bring that tenant forward, and there are very strict rules about noise and trash and impacts to the CCNC community, which also would then be effective for the town at large. I do think because of the age of these covenants that we're talking about, we might need to do a little wordsmithing on the text amendment language, because right now, you know, the declaration that's in place just doesn't go quite as specific as maybe the text amendment would like, and I do think to.
Isabel.
Yes.
We've gone over, but it's okay if you'll just finish your, if you kind of wrap it up a little bit, but go ahead for a second.
Okay.
Hit your three minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I hope I will have as much time as the prior speaker.
You've had more.
Okay, so, but I do want to, I do want to reiterate or underscore, rather, the fact that going into a neighborhood and trying to get sixty-seven percent is really difficult, and we'd rather not have to do that because we do have a structure, a very good structure in place that controls these things, and we just like a little bit of wordsmithing on the language. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have any sort of recommendations on that wordsmithing, you're welcome to give it to some staff as well, okay? Thank you very much. Those were the only two speakers that we have tonight, is there anybody else that we would, we would welcome another speaker as well? If you'll just approach, state your name and your address, and then again, you know, we're very loose on it tonight, but approximately three minutes or so.
Thanks, Jeremy, I'm Steve Say, I'm five McDonald Road East here in Pinehurst. And I guess, first off, look, you come to all these meetings, and oh, you guys give a lot of time, and you get yelled at a lot, and I don't think people appreciate, you know, the work that you have to put in, so in all honesty, you know, thank you, because there's not a lot of people doing that, you get shot at sometimes by me, and I just want to say that. So I'm going to take a little broader, I came in a little late, I thought I was at four-thirty, and based on Alex, I know this is your word salad, not your fault, but my head is about ready to explode. I'm a CCNC member, I very much am in favor of rentals there, I think the whole club is, I think members like myself and John Strickland understand that additional revenue saves us all money and creates the kind of atmosphere that is over there, and it's fabulous, right? So I'm a guy, try to get to the bottom line, we all know this is the CCNC carve-out, right? Let's just lay it out there, right? And if I can go back to last, your last meeting at number eight, which there was a meeting in the council, I saw you all approved it, which I think, look, CCNC has had sixty-five years of rental history, Village of Pinehurst and the resort has had a hundred and thirty, and you can argue that, you can, like John Strickland, say, you know, the golfers didn't come back then, but, right, that's just the bottom line, right? So, but yet, you know, and I raised this the other night, the hypocrisy is, you know, the Friday group and some of that element spent the last year, right, with torches demonizing short-term rentals here, right? That's just a fact, right? But yet, I don't see anybody, and I don't think they're here Tuesday either, right? So it's like, this community has to figure out, yeah, what we want to be, but guess what, I've been here for eighteen years, I can't lock the door, right? So we better get ahead of, nor should I be able to lock the door, right? Let's get, figure out what we're going to be, I mean, golf, for those of you not in the golf industry, it is at a level it's never been before, it is insanity, in a good way, right? There are people, and I have an arm in the golf industry, it is crazy, I can't underscore enough how nuts it is, right? People want to be here, people want to come to nice places. So somehow, we got to figure out, because there seems to be, and I know we have at least one lawyer in the house, look, there is going to be a lawsuit, right? There's no question about it. So what I am trying to reach out, and it's like, let's figure out how we can get along, right? How we, you know, evenly, evenly apply the rules to everybody and go forward in a positive way, and again, deal with the bigger issues we have, transportation, traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else wish to speak tonight on our, on our first public hearing? Seeing no more speakers, let's go ahead and move into the comment deliberations, start asking your questions, and let's deliberate as a board, hopefully moving towards a recommendation.
I mean, my thoughts, I think I've expressed them pretty clearly before, but that's not what we're asked to discuss tonight, where, I mean, we're, the, this has been proposed for a reason, it's something that council appears to, you know, want to move forward with. It also seems to be trying to thread the needle pretty closely, but that's, that's not really our job, you know, it's approving what's, or approving or considering what's in front of us and making tweaks there too. I, you know, one of the comments that was brought up, I'm a little wary of, and I would hope that it wouldn't be considered to wordsmith for a specific association since these changes need to be applied broadly and, you know, evenly to everyone involved. So, you know, I think the way that it's drafted has done as good of a job as it can. Hesitant for the reasons that I've, you know, stated the entire time, it seems like, as was brought up, we, you know, got rid of short-term, or halted short-term rentals. This being a form of short-term rental, you know, I agree that within certain communities, if they, if they have, if the members of the community decide that this is what they want, they should be able to. I do sense a lot of tension with what's already been passed, and, you know, what, whether something comes of that, whether people decide to pursue some sort of equal protection claim, I don't, I don't think that's in our hands to consider, I think it would be likely, but based on what's in front of us, I think it's as tailored as it, as it can be for what, what they're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Dave.
So my thoughts on this, as I've said before, and I've thought more about it, and the wording is pretty similar, I think, to what we've looked at. Landscape buffer is odd to me, it's like a further division between a neighborhood and who's not in the neighborhood, but nobody's got up and said that they think it's a bad idea, so maybe people don't think it's as weird as I do. But I just can't get around how the use, the land use of a short-term rental, which is not allowed, is really the same land use, just in a different area, and obviously governance is the difference, but what other land use can be nuanced that way? You know, you do have different types of offices and professional services and different, but still the use is what kind of defines where we want to allow it. So if the use is the same, I mean, the language is pretty similar in less than thirty days, to me, it, it seems like it's inconsistent, and when I look at what we already have in the ordinances with what's been passed in the fall, it's hard for me to say this is, you know, to recommend this because it just seems like the same land use that is now allowed where we've already said it's, it's not allowed. And I just, I mean, I've only been on this board two years, and I don't have a, a planning zoning degree, but as I approach it from my mindset, that's just what I can't get past, but I'm willing to think about it a different way, if anybody has thoughts on that.
I agree with you one hundred percent, and that's, that's been my reservation the whole time. In looking at the, the way that it's been defined, shoring up the definition, it does create a different item than, than a short-term rental. It is a form, but it is different. It's wall versus retaining wall, one's broad, one's specific. And that, that's a tension that I've also struggled with, but based on the definition and, you know, what's, what they're, I think, trying to achieve, it does leave odd taste because it can only be, if this were passed in its current form, it could only exist in one place, and that's, that's, I think, what I struggle with most. If it were passed and somehow there were, you know, five different communities where they could make this change or make the amendment, and there could be, but that's not the reality, but that doesn't change the definition and the goal, and, you know, if the challenges come, they come, but based on. But based on the desired, I guess, outcomes and the limitations therein, I think it's something that we considered when discussing the short-term rentals. There are some areas that are better suited, able to manage them easier. And it's just a shame that it was sort of a sweeping movement on the front end.
You made a comment there where you stated that this could only be implemented in one area. Expand on that.
I think if this were to pass tomorrow, if you reviewed the declarations for, you know, whichever communities that are at least, the contiguous areas containing at least 20 acres or 20 dwelling units, although there are, you know, however it was discussed, whether, you know, 15, however many places where it could apply, that's not the reality. You know, those declarations don't have existing allowances for short-term rentals, at least most of them, as far as I know. And if they're silent, then, you know, it's, if it's left out, the ambiguity is in favor of the, I guess, the community. So, the likelihood of getting an amendment in place with 67% of the lot owners, especially in existing areas, I think it's overly burdensome in that case, if there are landowners that would like to. But at the same time, if 67% of the members want it to happen, then they'll get together and do it.
But theoretically, it could happen through the change in bylaws and declarations and that type of thing inside of the HOA, right?
With at least 67%. Yep.
Yeah, I think this is inconsistent with what we've been doing over the last year, decisions that were, recommendations and then decisions. So, I mean, it does go back, and it's rather inconsistent with the, you know, what has already been occurred, which leaves you with the haves and have-nots, without a doubt. I'm not sure, you know, listening to the comments, not only today, but before, I'm not sure how short-term rentals equate to golf. So, if you have, if you golf, you can only stay in a short-term rental, you can't stay anywhere else. I mean, I don't understand the connection. And I would certainly say, if there's people who advocate that, without a doubt, my planning community wants short-term rentals, then, you know, quite honestly, if you want to influence a board, you should have had a vote and come in here and said, hey, 99% of them said they want this. That would be persuasive. I don't know that anyone has done that. And I would wager a bet, you know, one-to-one, that when they vote, people are not going to want short-term rentals in communities like that. It's only the people who are here that, who have financial gains and other motives. So, and, you know, we've all sat here through the trilogy, you know, last year, and, you know, I think we all understand each other's opinions on this. And I just would hate to have another divide or another situation within the community where I can do it, but you can't.
No, I agree with Paul. I thought it was interesting, the comment that this may not work anyway, were intended. I thought that was kind of interesting. But I'm very, very uncomfortable with this, with this, the way it's being implemented or proposed, let me put it that way. I see no widespread community requirement for this or demand. And I think Lynn pointed it out very well. I mean, who was asked for this? Is there a widespread community requirement? Is there, is it well-known that in the community, this is a need, such as the short-term rental issue, which went on for years, of course? I see no, I see no widespread community need for this, to be honest with you. Just as importantly, you know, HOAs are generally put in place and allowed to develop more restrictive land use rules and regulations than the underlying PDO usually allows. This would sort of franchise HOAs to implement less restrictive land use regulations than the underlying zoning allows. And so what you may end up with is two adjacent properties, both in the same zoning district, and yet, one property, because it happens to be cited within an HOA, has the ability to implement a land use that the property next to it does not allow. To me, that's very problematic. I really have a problem with that. It may be open for mischief, but in general, I think just the problematic nature of the, within a particular zoning district, to have different types of abilities of uses, I think that's problematic, and I have a problem with that.
I think if this would have come first, before the original decision for the short-term rentals, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But based on the history, that, yeah, I agree.
Right.
Please.
To answer Lynn's question, yes, it was brought up by CCNC. CCNC. And I, as a planning board member, also feel that's giving special permission to a special group of people after we have spent hundreds of hours trying to get this, so it's fair to everyone. The history of CCNC was that they were part of Southern Pines. They fought long and hard to become Pinehurst, and now they're going to try to change our way of living. I don't think that is what Pinehurst was meant to be or should be. If you buy a house in CCNC for rental, then you shouldn't even be in this community. I mean, it's not all about your golf. It is about the living of people that live here. And as a planning board member, it is my job to protect the entire community and not just one community.
Bruce, Louise, any input? No input for Louise. Bruce, do you have any input? Paul, I don't know if we've heard deeply from you after we've started still.
No input. So, you know, I'll just go ahead and state, you know, I think, I think this is a very well-written ordinance. I mean, you know, it's certainly crafty, it's creative. You know, some bright minds created this. It almost was like walking through minefields in this scenario, and they literally walked around every single one to create an ordinance that's going to allow arguably a small group of Pinehurst citizens to allow their flexibility. So, as a citizen, I'm deeply concerned. I'm concerned about where this was derived. I'm concerned about the direction to create such an ordinance. I think, you know, Lynn, being one citizen tonight, you know, stating, you know, saying 99% of Pinehurst doesn't even know this is going on. You know, 99% of Pinehurst knew that we were discussing short-term rentals, you know, a few months back. And, you know, and how are the tax-paying citizens better off with this ordinance? And that kind of, that struck me. And one of the things that hit me with that was also, we've heard a whole lot, and I have a lot of respect for all of our communities, and when we think and we make decisions and planning around, you know, what we do. And one of the things that struck me is, we've really heard a whole lot about how this isn't financially important to CCNC, their operations, and their financials. And when I think about that even deeper, I have to question, who is governing who? Are we governing CCNC, or is CCNC governing us?
Well, you're absolutely right. And all land use decisions have to be made in North Carolina. We signed up to that to, independent of the identity of the recipient, of the benefit of the land use decision.
And so their ordinance, as an HOA, should adhere to Pinehurst ordinances.
So, I'd say the same considerations were taken away from people who, you know, would have wanted to.
And I think that's what's interesting about this as a board.
Short-term rentals.
Because I'll make this statement also that we've talked about. We have not been unanimous during any of this conversation, except on this topic. No matter what side or your feelings are, this is the most unanimous that I have seen this board discuss, any certain topic ever. And so, you know, with that, we've also heard staff say that we cannot create an ordinance that's going to protect a developer to flip a development. We can't do that. So, I'm concerned that our vision of this ordinance is stuck inside of CCNC and inside of Pinewild, and we're not taking a look outside of those gates in what's going to, what possibility of things that would happen in effect outside of those gates. When we talk about development, when we talk about, you know, the permitting of the developments and what could happen, us as a planning board, that is where I think our intention and direction is, is of Pinehurst as a whole, not really one community, two communities. So, that's really my concerns, because I'm hearing that we cannot protect a certain group of citizens if they chose not to participate in this. And so, those are my concerns, and I'm definitely, you know, I can't critique the ordinance too much. And when we talk about some of the uses, we talked about how the staff cannot protect or we cannot change this ordinance, protect, you know, in development situations. But we can, and I think as a planning board, we have to consider our comprehensive plan. And I think to Paul's statement earlier, I'm not so sure how this has to do with protecting golf, other than golf inside of some communities. And I may be out of my bounds here, and I get it, but those are my concerns personally as a citizen. And as a board member, when I take a look at this and I measure those concerns as a citizen, as I would think that a lot of people would, I start to develop the concerns on each of our topics that we've discussed. So, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I'll just come back to, if this had come before our discussions and decisions in, or, well, council's decisions in the fall, I think it would be okay, you know, allowing people within a community, if they want to do something, they should be able to. But that's not what we decided, that's not what council decided was best for the village. And, you know.
So, if we're moving towards a motion, and the four options that we have, rejection may be one, but the other that I naturally think of is, is there a way to amend this to make it something that we could? And at that point, I think we would start to lose consensus on how to amend it. I mean, the only thought that I have is, you know, you take what is at the heart of this, and in light of 2012-15, you know, what was enacted last fall on short-term rentals, creating the definition and the restriction, and you, you know, we continue to work towards how to come up with a regulation, but it would, you would have to allow short-term rentals and then bring restriction from there. I don't think you can go from total restriction and then allow.
Well, the amendments that we're discussing, unfortunately, are for not, not that.
Right, right. That's right. It's a greater.
Only consider these definitions, these amendments to the ordinance. So, I agree with that. But I don't think we can make that sort of decision tonight.
So, kind of along that point, if we need to, at this point as a board, if we need to discuss the table of permitted special uses, or if we need to discuss any of the definitions, if anybody can pinpoint any opportunity there that we can discuss this ordinance to improve it as a recommendation back, let's continue so. If not, we'll, you know, go back to see what our options are. We can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments as drafted. We can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments with the revisions that we would discuss. We can continue. I'm not so sure there's any sort of information. If anybody needs more information for a continuous, please, let's go and discuss that option. Otherwise, we can recommend to reject the proposed amendments, and we've all have procedure and motion templates as provided by staff.
I would point to the board options, again, that Jeremy just summarized. With the consideration of everyone's personal thoughts and feelings that you all have went and shared, and Jeremy, you made a very good point regarding some type of lodging use within a single-family residential structure, you guys seem pretty much in lockstep. Also, will point you to the prepared motion templates that you have, whatever this board may decide, or whatever motion is offered up when the floor is granted for such, to consider the statement of consistency or inconsistency. And if the latter, please make sure that that's kind of well-known, what that is.
And so, Bruce, go ahead.
I do have a question. And I'll take the privilege of being short-term and did not have the benefit or luxury of sitting through the prior year when you finally did adopt this ordinance. Would it be correct to assume that property owners, existing property owners at CCNC, who had been operating a short-term rental, had the same grandfathering capability that homeowners in other parts of the community did?
Yes.
Yep.
Anybody want to work on a motion, at least pertaining to the consistency statement?
Question.
Or more discussion?
You know, do we reject it and let the staff go back and relook at the concerns that were discussed today, and then kind of get a clean slate? I mean, if that's the decision. You know, vice, us sitting here, you know, pulling out the Webster dictionary and trying to, I know, I'd put Matt in the breach there and let him do that, does a great job with that, but he looks a little picky tonight.
Well, I think it would be up to council, really, and staff, what the direction would be the next steps.
Yeah, reject it and go back.
Right.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. At the end of the day, it's a recommendation.
And to be clear, that this proposal that you guys are considering for a recommendation has been what has been developed out of that direction. So, that is why it is before you that this is the framework and what the desire has been and how it has been tweaked. There's other comments that council has made. We, Jeremy, you pointed the board to the last discussion, I believe at the end of January, that Darren and I brought forth to council at a work session on this topic, where we heard feedback, and we've received feedback as of even this week on this topic. So, but in large, this is the framework that has come out of that. So, any other direction, any other potential opportunities to address this or something similar or more broadly, that's not been the charge.
Not allow us to get the can down the road, huh?
Okay, then, can I make a motion? I move the planning board and zoning board, um, deny, what part do you want me to read?
So, I think we, let's, I would suggest that we focus on the consistency statement initially.
All right. I move the planning and zoning board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as to press text amendment not consistent with the adopted 2019 comprehensive plan as described in the staff report prepared by Maria Carpenter, dated March 2, 2023.
We have a motion on the floor by Sonya.
There, are we denying the consistency statement?
Point of discussion, I think you might be on the wrong page.
That's why I was asking.
On the front page is the one for this hearing.
Oh, okay. Well, good catch, because I'm.
Well, you just said Maria, and this one's got Alex's name in it, so it's what you said, but with slight modification.
Thanks, Matt.
I asked.
And to, just to be clear, the recommendation can be, typically, if you're going to recommend approval of something, it's going to be because it's consistent with your plan. You can also recommend something that's not consistent with your plan.
Good point.
You could recommend something or not recommend something, and it still may be considered consistent. So, just, I don't want the board or who, Sonya, if you feel so moved to make that statement of consistency, here's that guiding principle. So, it's in your judgment whether or not you feel it is or is not consistent.
So, as a board, we have to separate these two topics.
So as a board, we have to separate these two topics in our brains, in our minds. So our first question, is the ordinance consistent with our comprehensive plan? And, and those then are the motion template on the first page.
Want me to make a stab at the consistency? Are you, is your motion still in the place? It hasn't been seconded, so it's.
It has not been seconded. You wish, or you want to remove the?
Want to withdraw that?
I'll let you do it.
I move the planning and zoning board recommend the village council reject the proposed amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. The proposal text amendment is not consistent with the 2019 comprehensive plan in that it would treat different neighborhoods with different land use abilities.
I'll second that then.
Well, Alex, that covers both together.
It's two in one, that, that would suffice.
Okay.
The, the record will show that the board considered the 2019 comprehensive plan and come into the recommendation.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor by Jack and it was seconded by Sonya. Unless there's any discussion, I want to call for a roll call vote, beginning with Bruce.
Aye.
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 Seven to nothing. Okay, let's count there, nothing. So unanimous, seven to nothing. Well, I don't vote, so. So seven to nothing for the recommendation of rejecting the ordinance. So unless anybody needs a break, we'll move on to the, we need a, we need a motion to exit the public hearing.
You, you, we can, we can actually just stay in.
We can stay in one for all?
And just close and after we're done with the third.
Okay.
So we don't have to keep coming in or out or in or out with all the.
Understand.
But I'm going to swap places with Alfred, so if you give staff just a second.
Let's go ahead and take a break and let's convene at 5:20.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome back. It's 5:22. I will mention that we are still in a public hearing scenario. So we'll move on to public hearing number two, and we will look to Mr. Alfred Cassidy.
So to remind myself to speak clearly and directly into the microphone, I'll start over. Welcome back, everyone. It's 5:22. We're still in a public hearing. And we will move on to our second public hearing of the night where Mr. Alfred Cassidy is going to present it for staff. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance regulating retaining walls. The proposal would amend the following sections of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. Chapter nine, Design and Development Standards and Processes. Session 9.13, Fences, Walls, and Columns, L Retaining Walls, G Fences and Rights-Aways. The Village of Pinehurst staff has identified a few areas of the existing regulations for retaining walls where clarification can be made. Specifically, these areas are relative to the allowance for height and location setbacks. These amendments will help staff better administer the regulations in the PDO and provide clarity to owners, designers, architects, engineers, contractors when determining what rules shall apply for retaining walls. And these are the proposed amendments for session 9.13, Fences, Walls, and Columns pertaining to retaining walls. A development permit is required for a retaining wall 18 inches or taller in height. Retaining walls located in the front yard setbacks shall not exceed three and a half feet in height. Retaining walls of the six feet in height may project into the side and rear setbacks, excluding golf courses, lake fronts, and side street setbacks. Retaining walls located in the golf course or lake accessory building setbacks shall not exceed 18 inches in height. Retaining walls 18 inches or taller in height shall not be closer than five feet to a property line or a right-of-way line. Retaining walls shall be measured from the lowest ground elevation to the highest point of the wall. Retaining walls constructed in a series of two or more shall be, excuse me, shall provide a minimum of 12 inches of horizontal separation planted in grass or other vegetation between each walls. Retaining walls shall be solid cement, masonry, or wood, and constructed to the standards of the North Carolina State Building Code where required. A finished style of a retaining wall shall face outward towards the street or adjacent Proposed amendments in session 9.13G, Fences and the Rights-Away. No fits, walls, columns, or retaining walls should be located within any public or private right-of-way unless approved by the village and only for purposes of preserving specimen trees or desired vegetation as determined by the village planner or when required for public purposes. Retaining walls for sidewalk construction, stormwater management, et cetera, in such cases for structures proposed within the public right-of-way, the village preserves the right to require submission of an application for a right-of-way encroachment permit by the applicant and approved by the village prior to encroaching structures being constructed. All structures are limited to a maximum height of 30 inches above grade. These structures do not require a development permit. According to the Comprehensive Plan of 2019 Strategic Opportunities, number four, promote high-quality development and design through an update to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance that includes character-based zoning concepts and the use of pattern books. Pinehurst's small charm and appeal is due to a large part to the scale and architectural design of its buildings as well as its lush landscaping throughout the community. Updating and modernizing the Pinehurst Development Ordinance could help ensure that future development is of the desired scale and character favorable by the Pinehurst residents. After conducting the public hearing, the planning and zoning board has the following options. Recommend the adoption of the proposed amendments as drafted. Recommend adoption of the proposed amendments with provision to any of the sections as presented. Continue the public hearing to gather more input or comment on the proposal or continue deliberation and discussions. Recommend rejections of the proposed amendments. Staff recommends that the planning and zoning board recommend approval of the proposed amendments and adopt the statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan provided.
Thank you, Alfred, and I think we appreciate this ordinance as well, as we just recently have had our own struggles reading this ordinance in some meetings. So we'll open this up again for any sort of questions to Alfred or any other staff member pertaining to any sort of definitions or more understanding that we would need.
And just to add a little bit to the presentation that Alfred just went over, obviously, there have been some recent events that led for staff to make a little bit more defined, even structure, of how retaining walls are addressed in the PDO. There have been a couple of little, small, friendly amendments that I appreciate Jack had sent over to me from the time the agenda material was posted relative to the items. Alfred, if you'll back up a little bit to the red line ordinance document right there. I believe there are numbers six and seven, new numbers six and seven, about the measurement to the highest point of the wall and the between each wall. So those are two very minor tweaks that we have made since the posting of the agenda with the material that you guys have seen. But staff, we have circulated this through. Our planning zoning specialists are the ones who are on the front lines when it comes to reviewing and issuing permits for retaining walls, or conversely, who go out and do final zoning inspections and then find retaining walls that may or may not have been permitted. So we wanted to make sure this was vetted all up and down the halls of planning inspections. The inspectors added a little bit there about that if where it's required, it be constructed to the North Carolina State Building Code, because those regulations are actually about to change. And a lot of that's based on the displacement between fill on either side of the walls. I believe it's going to change to where if it's more than five foot of fill or a separation greater than five feet or greater on either side, then it basically has to be engineered. So we made sure that we've got ample input, which is the only reason, other than other work items that we've been doing, that it took us from November till now to get these before you. We would have liked to have them this time last year. But we're open to whatever clarifying items or feedback you guys maybe will provide, and I'm certainly going to make Matt work a little bit on this one.
I think these are a great response to what we encountered in the past. If these had been in place, then, you know, I think that meeting would have been a little more clear, a little easier to administer. So I think the response is welcome, and I think it will make, you know, administration of the ordinance, and it'll make it easier for staff and property owners, honestly. So thank you, staff, for putting this together.
It'd be a platted right-of-way that where it is owned or maintained by a private entity, an HOA, that would not be either a state DOT maintained road or a road or right-of-way maintained by the village.
Would this be alleyways behind the village houses?
No, that would not be, because they're not truly platted rights-of-way.
Okay.
Which has created other issues that we're all aware of.
My only question, comment, I guess, retaining law, so it's retaining something, right? It's holding back soil. So I understand the restrictions. We don't want to get in a situation where you have a retaining wall that's, you know, 10 feet, whatever. But I guess if you're retaining soil, you're going to have to adjust the height of the wall to retain that. So I guess the height restriction was my only concern, and it wasn't a concern that we should restrict him to 18 inches. There's got to be some accommodation with what the purpose is of the retention wall that makes sense. So, and I don't see that in there. You know, does it need to be in there, or does that go back to what you were talking about, Alex? If you have a five-foot, you know, then it needs to be engineered by a structural engineer to make sure it doesn't fall down on someone.
We can add that to the...
Just go ahead and back up, Alfred, to the bulk of the text there. So what was, and to add some clarity there, Paul, so we define retaining walls basically as anything that's holding back lateral displacement of soil or otherwise. So it is clearly defined. So what was the concern about the 18 inches and within five feet of the property line or right-of-way? That's the concern?
Well...
That it's strictly limited to that setback?
Yeah, and if you're trying to, and you're trying to hold back 28 inches of soil, I guess.
You just have to move it back six feet off the property line.
Okay. Got it.
Then it can go up higher.
All right. Thank you.
Or you could end up with a board of adjustment.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Again, as, and we actually, if you really look careful enough, and Maria will tell you, because she just came in and asked me a question one day, and then I went into the version four or five right then of this ordinance. We kind of laxed it a little bit, knowing that some of the conditions and the constraints on the undeveloped lots that are left, while also trying to be cognizant of properties that, but the golf course, you can understand safety reasons. We heard some testimony to that when the Board of Adjustment hearing. But in other situations, it should be warranted, and we, I think I was a little more restrictive earlier on, and so I tried to pare that back a little bit to allow for more lateral displacement of soil using a wall.
Yeah, all the good lots are gone in a lot of the places, so you have to move soil around. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
A couple of questions. So making sure I understand, from point number one, then anywhere on site that a retaining wall would propose to be built requires a development permit, not just in a buffer or a setback.
If it's 18 inches or taller.
If it's 18 inches or taller, even if it's in the middle of site, that's the requirement.
Lowest elevation to the highest point of the wall.
Correct.
So even if, yeah, even if the wall itself is 17 inches throughout, I'm understanding if it's 19 inches or, yeah, anywhere higher than that on a hill or slope or whatever it might be, it's not likely to meander, but...
Whatever the highest point of the wall, if you drop a tape to where it hits ground, if it's 18 inches or taller.
Okay. And then, I didn't see this, but I wanted to just ask, based on number eight, there's no reference in the engineering standards manual to Pinehurst's own standards on retaining walls, correct?
There is not.
Yeah. Okay. I had another comment, but I, about changing 9.13B1, but honestly, the more I read it, the more I don't think it's a necessary change. I think it's clear enough.
Seeing other immediate questions, I will just, just for the sake of the process, we had no sign up from any public request, but I'll open that up real quick if anyone wants to say anything to this one. Here, seeing nobody, we just have a couple, right? Seeing no one jumping to the microphone, let's go ahead and move on to the deliberation. Whereas, whereas the same rules apply for whatever options are as a board and our recommendation to council. So we'll begin the deliberation in hopes of getting to a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on the consistency statement.
I'll accept the motion.
I move the planning and zoning board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as the proposed text amendments are consistent with the adopted 2019 Comprehensive Plan as described in the staff report prepared by Alfred Cassidy dated February 9th. No, what's today? March 2nd, 2023. I'm David Elzamora.
We have a motion by David. We're second. Second by Sonia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have a consistency statement for the ordinance. You know, and this is one we're just hearing where we are as a board. If there's anything further that we could do to make this ordinance better, please speak up. If not, we'll go ahead and accept the motion.
I think it was pretty good, as comprehensive as it is, so...
Any discussion? All right.
I'll make a motion.
We need a council recommendation motion, all right? All right, I'll move. I move the planning and zoning board recommend the Pinehurst Village Council adopt the proposed amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance.
Motion made by Jack, second by Sonia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we recommend adoption of this text amendment. Thank you, Alfred, and staff. Some of a question, so the next one's going to be presented by Maria. Do we need any, we'll just move right into the next one unless there is any reason. Okay.
Thank you for switching the name plates. We just didn't want to call you Alfred.
Welcome, Maria. We'll take your introduction of the third.
Ready?
Ma'am.
Okay. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider a text amendment to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance for the use of land for temporary rental only, upon which recreational vehicles, or RVs, are allowed in the public conservation district. The proposal would amend the following sections. Section 8.5.1, the table of permitted and special uses and special requirements, and section 10.2 definitions. Some background, staff has received requests from the Pinehurst Driving and Training Club as well as other clients at the Harness Track that want to bring their recreational vehicles on site for training season, which runs from October 15th to May 1st annually. RVs have been allowed to stay at the facility with a seven-day maximum since at least 2002 in the past. And this amendment would allow those leasing stalls for the training season or as part of an equestrian event that has rented the facility to stay on the property and hook up to facilities from October to May, starting October 15th of this year. So the proposed amendments for section 8.5, the zoning table of permitted and special requirement, the revisions to this section would add recreational vehicle park as a permitted by right in the PC zoning district within the table. Here you can see the table where the recreational vehicle park is. Previously, it was not permitted by right in any district, and now it would be allowed in the public conservation district. In section 10.2 definitions, the revision to this section would slightly change the existing definition of recreational vehicle park within the PDO, and it would provide for regulating the use of land within the table 8.5.1A. So the current definition of recreational vehicle park is a commercial enterprise on any site or tract of land with two or more spaces or sites which are provided for temporary rental only, upon which recreational vehicles are provided utility hookups and services. Service buildings and areas necessary to provide laundry, sanitation, storage, vending machines, and other permitted services are provided by the facility operator for the use and convenience of recreational vehicles. So the proposed revision here would be very minor. Again, all we're doing is changing it to the use of land, which includes two or more spaces or sites which are provided for temporary rental only, upon which recreational vehicles are provided utility hookups and services. Here we have a map of the Village of Pinehurst, and you can see the green shaded areas are the public conservation zoning district, and the hashed parcels are the ones that are village-owned. So the majority of them are all village-owned, with the exception of two of the parcels. This one right here, you can hardly see, that is Village Chapel, and the one down here in the ETJ is owned by Moore County, and that's the landfill. Probably no RV parks there.
But they could.
Well, we'll see.
Things do change, right?
Who knows?
Thank you, Maria.
We don't have any yet.
She's not done.
We will, any questions?
Still have more for you, Jerry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I wonder.
I am in a hurry tonight, Alex.
You are.
Yes.
So for the text amendments, it does have to be consistent with the 2019 Comprehensive Plan. So guiding principle number seven, all things green, preserve, conserve, and feature Pinehurst Natural Resources with expanded parks, open spaces, and events that enhance the health and well-being of the community and the environment. And it states that the village should seek ways to enhance strategic partnerships with other public and private entities to expand and enhance recreation facilities and programs offered. And staff does feel that guiding principle number seven, or the proposed text amendment is consistent with guiding principle number seven of the Comprehensive Plan. So your board options after the public hearing, you can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments as drafted. You can recommend adoption of the proposed amendments with revisions to any of the sections as presented. So section 8.5, the table of permitted and special uses and special requirements, or section 10.2 definitions. You can recommend rejection of the proposed amendments, or you continue the public hearing to gather more input or comment on the proposal. If you choose to do this, you must state a specific time, date, and place to continue it to.
I have a question.
Staff does recommend that the planning and zoning board recommend approval of the proposed amendments and adopt the statement of consistency with the Comprehensive Plan provided.
Can't leave any gaps, or we'll jump right in. You've got to be careful.
So, so Maria, you've seen some of our past meetings where the heat has been on to complete, right, very quickly, and so that's what we're all feeling.
I'm slowing it down for you.
She is.
Now I'll say thank you for the presentation, Maria, and not to call him out, but we also have Mark Wagner here tonight, Director of Parks and Recreation, if we need any further background on where this, where this text amendment change may be derived from. We'll go ahead and ask your questions.
So is there exactly a specific place, like at the barn, for these RVs in total number? Do we have a total number that can be there?
I am going to refer you to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Wagner.
Welcome, Mark.
I think you can answer these questions for us.
And there is a lot of history on the use of these RVs at the track. We've had it in our fee schedule for how long?
Since 2002, at least.
So we've been doing it, it's one of those things that last, this past summer, we realized that, you know, we might be construed to be doing something that might not quite be on the up and up with our zoning regulations, and I'll let Mark speak more about the demand, which has changed very recently, and there are some specific locations that Mark would... So Mark Wagner, Parks and Recreation Director of the Village of Pinehurst.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you for saving me from introducing myself. So just background, I've been here since 1996 with the village, 1999, in a role that oversaw the Harness Track specifically as part of our operations, and RVs have been on that site at least since then, as they are associated with horse shows. Back in the day, there were actually mobile homes on this property where the Fair Barn sits in the parking lot. We used to have mobile homes. It was an intentional effort to remove those from the site. Now, in terms of the RVs, we do have existing about eight hookups that are at various barns around the property. We do not want to use those for this purpose, for the trainers that would be on site from October to May, because they're very visible from the road. Our intent would be to create a separate area, probably back between barn nine and 10, at the very least, adjacent to barn six, where we would create four to five spaces for RVs. As Alex mentioned, this has been a space request from trainers and clients over the years. It's grown in the last two or three years as our stall numbers have decreased. We've had people say, boy, if you had a spot where I could bring my RV, and so I don't have to rent a condo for $2,000 a month, you know, I'll bring 30 horses. And we actually lost three trainers this year with a total of 35 horses, because we did not, we were not able to allow the RVs to hook up during the season. So we're fairly confident, based on the feedback that we've received and the input from the Driving and Training Club, that this will increase our stall rentals and increase the revenue for the Harness Track as a result.
Can you give the board some sort of indication of the cost of each one of these horses, possibly, or the investment that these trainers or these owners make?
The estimate this year for the 170 horses we have is they have a value of around $3 million.
So is it the...
Sorry. $30 million.
$30 million.
That was a little low.
Is some of the demand coming from maybe the owners or the trainers not wanting to leave their horses? Or where is this kind of, why would they need to stay on site?
It's primarily from the trainers. The trainers would like to be on site. A lot of the training facilities down in Florida have a full-blown RV park with all of the facilities that you would normally see, and that's where that trainer stays. They're on site. Like you said, they have easy access to their horses. Most of the trainers that we have live within five to 10 miles, farthest away. We do have a few who actually live on site in the barns, in the groom's quarters that we have upstairs. But definitely, the opportunity to be closer to their horses, should something happen in the barn, they're right there on site. They could respond to that quickly. But again, I think the primary focus for them is the convenience of being there, and they're not having to buy a house or rent, you know, a condo across the street or as close as they can find one, especially in today's market, that's very, very difficult to find.
Would this allow you, then, as Director of Parks and Rec, to then maybe advertise that this is now an option above the table to do at Pinehurst and maybe...
Yeah, if this was approved, we would certainly, in our marketing and promotions that we do, social media, we do website promotion at various trade organizations and print ads in magazines. So we would certainly let that be known, but I'm positive that word of mouth will fill these five spots by this summer if we're able to do this.
Got you.
Mark, do we, is utility sufficient to expand the ability to attach?
Yeah, all we are going to provide is power and water. We will not have any facilities for sewer, vending, restrooms, so all of that will be on them to contract with off-site vendors.
Okay, who would pay for the water? We have a one-meter, and we just kind of built into the...
We would have a meter, yes, and charge them a fee, so...
Okay.
I don't know whether, who to direct this to. I guess Maria, when we refer to two spaces, is that two spaces per barn? It says two spaces.
I think that's at least two spaces. Oh, close my pocket.
I think it's land use that has at least two spaces for...
I am the proud owner of...
Four spaces.
Two or more spaces.
25% of a horse down there. I think it's the rear portion. But it's much needed.
Can you leave that definition up? I have a question.
Someplace it referred to, oh.
Which includes two or more spaces.
Yeah. Provided, and that's provided, we're saying it's provided by the village?
Yeah, we would create a specific site for these if approved.
And you could be all in one space or by the barn?
We would be all in one space, yeah. We don't want to allow them by the barns during the training season because of the length of time they would be there. They'd be very visible, and, you know, we hope everybody has a nice, brand-new RV, but you might have Cousin Eddie's RV from your Christmas vacation, so we want to be mindful of that.
The two-spaces part already exists as in the current definition. The only thing changing is commercial enterprise, just opening up the use including, so that's already part of it.
So this becomes a use definition, and so therefore it can be put in the table of uses.
And it's already in the table, but it's a little bit... It is, but it's not been permitted. It's in the table now. It's in the table, not allowed, yeah. So, there's a little slight change in the wording of the definition, because obviously the village is not a commercial entity. But changes that, but then it seats it only in the public conservation district, which, as Maria showed you with her map, there's two other parcels that are not owned by the village, the Moore County landfill and the village chapel, which just went through a conditional zoning back in 2020, I believe, which has restricted, further restricted uses where that wouldn't be permitted.
Just to point something out with the tie-in to the training season or equestrian events at the track, you will not see us come with a request to put an RV park in Wicker Park in the Arboretum or at Canter Park. This is the only property where that would happen.
Sure.
And then, we don't, do we even have anything on the fee schedule or anything for those other areas?
Uh, we just have RV parking per day currently in the fee schedule at the Harness Track, which is associated with the horse shows.
Mark.
That fee will be adjusted if this is approved to account for a significant increase in the cost for that.
Which also explains the, some of the timing and why we're bringing this through as we're, village leaders are beginning to work more to FY '24.
Yes.
Mark, thank you for having that foresight. I think it's important to do that with the barn and keep the racetrack viable. I know I've seen some of the ads, and we've lost out on some of the business because of it, and I also appreciate you trying to hide the trailers, especially since we're working on that part of the village, and we don't want it to be welcome Pinehurst Trailer Park, so to speak. So, thank you for all your wonderful foresight in getting us into the Pinehurst spirit besides just golf.
You're welcome.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna try to say this with straight face, but I'm not trying to be funny about it, but if you, you know, go on the schedule, you reserve a RV park, does it have to be associated with the horse activity, or could you, you know, get an RV, come down here and actually golf or something, or do you have to be connected to the horses?
You have to either rent stalls from us for the training season, which is October 15th to May 1st, or you have to be a participant in a horse show on a weekend where a show promoter has rented the facility. Those are the only ways you can do it. I actually had a gentleman reach out, interested in one of the properties down there if they were available, not a barn, and he thought that would be a way for him to be able to bring his RV down here and stay on site, and I've informed him that that would not be the case unless he was here as part of the training season. Now, he could rent out stalls in a barn during the training season, and then that would allow him to stay, but it would only allow him to stay for seven months, not the full year.
So, you have a lease contingency?
Yes.
Okay. And one question on the definition. The last sentence, where service buildings and areas necessary to provide laundry, sanitation, storage, vending machines, so forth, are provided by the facility operator, does that obligated us versus if it said may be provided by the facility operator?
I do like that language better personally, because we do not intend to provide that.
The last sentence could even be removed.
I was just saying that, you know, if you want to keep the definition, the last sentence, that's fine, but I would say may be provided, not necessarily are provided, because.
If provided, it'll be, they will be done by the.
Yeah. I like leaving it, but maybe making it conditional, because right now, the definition in there is designed to be, even though it's not permitted in any areas, designed to be talking about an RV park, so if in some case in the future somebody want to develop, you know, that at a property not in a PC-zoned area, we wouldn't necessarily have to modify the definition. Again, this just makes it a little more general, but I, so I wouldn't want to take that out necessarily, but maybe modifying it.
As I mentioned, we don't have intentions to do that. Could that change down the road if there's a lot of interest? Certainly, that could be something the village has looked at. We've looked at building those.
This sounds like it obligates you to provide.
Right. I agree, and I like that suggestion, so, yeah.
If provided, service buildings and areas necessary to provide laundry, sanitation, storage, vending machines, and other permitted services shall be provided by the facility operator for the use and convenience of recreational vehicles. So, if it's, if it's an option, then it shall be provided by the operator.
Oh, I see.
But if it's not offered, then it doesn't matter. It's only if it is, it has to be offered by the facility operator.
You change "are" to "may be"?
But I think the goal is tying it to the facility operator, not having third parties coming in, operating a commercial enterprise there. So, as long as it's still part of the facility's operations, you're not requiring them to offer it, but if it is offered, it's managed by the facility.
Why don't we say something like service buildings and areas, blah, 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 may only be provided by the operators?
Yeah. We want to be very, we want to be clear in our recommendation on the verbiage, I would think, and of course, I always look at Matt, and Matt looks down.
Well, I mean, I like it. I just had one other question before we move to somebody making a motion is, so the, so right now, you can have seven days for every six months, and this changes it to say there's no time restriction in the ordinance, correct? Didn't I read that, that currently it's a seven-day?
From seven days, that they can be there for the full seven-month training season.
Or six, yeah.
Schedule currently allows it for a maximum of seven days. We typically only have an RV there for two or three nights, which is the length of the show. So, we've never had a seven-day that we've approved or have allowed, so.
But that's like, that's a consecutive seven days. It's not accumulative over the year.
Right. Yeah. So, by that logic, you could have it there for seven days, move it one, and come back. But again, if you don't have a horse show, we would not allow it.
Well, right, and that, it seems less restrictive, which is the intention. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
It is a good idea to have those trailers, because the resort has those fireworks now, and God would have helped his horses when it happened the last time around. I was really concerned about that.
David, I like your revision.
David's considering you do the revision. Are you preparing a motion? Okay. Maybe making him sit, making him stand there forever. If we don't have any other further questions for Mark, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll see you next month.
So, the second part of the definition as edited would be, so after and services, if offered, service buildings and areas necessary to provide laundry, sanitation, storage, vending machines, and other permitted services shall only be offered by the facility operator for the use and convenience of recreational vehicles.
Perfect.
Any feedback on that? Staff?
He's catching up with her.
That's all right. I'm sorry. Let's see if the staff had any feedback on that.
What was the first part again? Where are you starting?
Uh, just right after, hookups and services.
Okay.
Inserting if offered, comma, service buildings and areas necessary to provide all of that, vending machines and other permitted services shall only be offered by the facility operator for the use and convenience of recreational vehicles.
Well, I still concern myself that that obligates the village to provide those services. It sort of sounds like if you want laundry services, you got to get it through the village.
Only if it's offered, if they're not offering it.
Oh, I see. That's your hook, okay.
Yep.
So, he doesn't have to offer it.
Exactly.
Okay. I see where you're going. So, that, let's mark off the hook for laundry services, right? Okay.
If it's not offered, then.
Got it.
Any, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Any feedback on that as a board? If there's no feedback, then I'll ask for a motion.
Consistency.
Yeah. Consistency statement first or included, but first would be helpful for clarity.
I move the planning and zoning board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as the proposed text amendments are consistent with the adopted 2019 comprehensive plan as described in the staff report prepared by Maria Carpenter dated March 2nd, 2023.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor by Matt, seconded by Sonya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are approved on the consistency statement.
I'd like to make a motion for counsel.
Please.
I move the planning and zoning board recommend to the Pinehurst Village Council that they adopt with revisions the proposed amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, the revisions being the second sentence as stated.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by David, seconded by Sonya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none. Opposed, that is our recommendation to counsel on item number, or public hearing number three. Maria, thank you. Staff, thank you very much. Thank you for that.
Okay. I move to adjourn the public hearing and re-enter the regular meeting.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing by Jack, seconded by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We have exited the public hearing, and we are now back into our regular meeting. The, where we're going to address the next agenda item under general business, where we're going to discuss scheduling and work session meetings, and I think the original request from staff that we all discussed, it was sent out by an email, is that we're going to need approximately, is it 627? Or from staff, what's probably our request?
So, obviously, this is our first opportunities of board to kind of be together after some emails have been exchanged. Thank you, Jeremy, for initiating the first set, and thank you, Jeremy and Jack, for meeting with me last week to kind of sort of discuss some of our next steps that we need to do. And my right hand in all this is in the room, too. She picked her head up. She knew who I was talking about. You're going to be seeing some more of her, I surely hope. So, obviously, we still have this item of the form-based codes. We want to get that driven home as well as a way to weave all the work that we've put in, that this community has provided input on through the course of over two years, into their regulatory framework, so within our PDO and within our zoning map, to try to get something in place so we can have some sort of development that outlines within that vision. We have a path forward, I believe. I have shared some dates and circulated that we know for certain that Assembly Hall is open. I've gone out up to the month of May, depending on how much we can accomplish and how quickly. That will really greatly depend on how many meetings we need. I would ultimately, I think ideally, it would be great to get with this board on average about once a week. That way, we can, we don't have to remind ourselves where we left off so much with the last meeting. The first topic I would like to tackle is get a final look at the draft Village Place Form-Based Code, which was handed out to you guys as a departing gift from Darren at the last monthly meeting, and hopefully, we can get to a recommendation to counsel on that. And then, you kind of hopefully read in my email that targeted approach that I have of how we're going to, at least initially, get some of this implemented into our code, and therefore have that form-based code and the small area plans as a guiding document for development within those areas, which would give the planning and zoning board a chance to review and make a recommendation through a general concept plan and conditional zoning request to village council, who would ultimately have their thoughts and action on that item. You haven't seen that yet. We have a draft memo that's already been prepared, kind of discussing sort of the reasoning behind that approach. Also, it gives us what we don't really have much of, none of us, and that's time to get something in place so the moratorium goes away, but we're also safeguarded in the type of development outcome we'd like to see. But also, it gives us an opportunity to reevaluate after a period of time, gives us an opportunity of staff to get prepared, to get trained, to understand how we're going to be able to manage or administer some of those regulations, and it's a lot, especially those architectural standards, and especially how those architectural standards may be applied within residential properties. It's another big reason in the conditional zoning format that we're approaching. So, I went through initially the orange areas are sort of what I felt might be a first pick, if you will, of some dates, yellows are optional makeup, and then you'll see a green is, we kind of have to work back from a deadline of May 5th, when the Village Place moratorium expires, and that means getting something to counsel in and around that timeframe, which puts you guys three to four weeks ahead of that. So, it's aggressive. I know it's aggressive, and to Jeremy's point in his email, we don't expect a board of eight or nine every meeting by any chance. We all have things that we need to attend to and should, but if we can target five once a week, I will be very happy, and I think we can actually make some progress that way, thanks to Sonya, Jack, and Jules, who have pretty, provided us with a detailed availability that they have, and we're already getting several dates within the month, this month of March, that overlap with three members already, so we're looking pretty positive.
With that feedback that you've gotten from three board members, does that change your proposal at all within the first few weeks?
Does not.
Okay. I think how we discussed this, kind of having to just make sure that we're aligned, is that if we could go ahead and get the topics which you've provided that we need to achieve for, thank you, Paul, for bringing that up and requesting that, and if we went ahead and firmed up the dates, are we still planning on sending out the, what kind of the scheduling? What is the scheduling email that comes out in the weekend, confirm? If not, we would be there as a board?
Once we got confirmed dates, oh, yeah, we'll set the agenda. I mean, again, A1A is going to be Village Place Form-Based Code. Things may change a little bit from what I've drafted based on just timing and other circumstances that are surrounding it, but we might work on, go ahead and getting a crack at what the code updates are going to look like, and then pick back up on some of the Pinehurst South Form-Based Code, because if we get the code updates in, we still have the small area plan for Pinehurst South to fall back on, while we pick up working on the table of permitted uses, the lot standards, the street standards, architectural standards, and then a final recommendation on the consolidated Form-Based Code for Pinehurst South. So, three to four weeks out, if we can get availability, we can set a pretty firm schedule with always knowing if we didn't accomplish something in the previous meeting date, that that item's going to carry over.
What was the scheduling email that was sent out that we've used in the past for some of these?
The doodle pole.
The doodle pole. Are we still planning on utilizing that to confirm availability?
We wanted a little, something more shored up before we sent that out, and that's really going to help us nail down time ranges, probably more than just the dates. I mean, right now, March 7th, March 9th, March 13th, March 15th, March 16th, the 21st, the 29th, and the 30th are still somewhat on the table, just from the three board members that we've gotten. So, if we get two more on any of those dates, we can establish that. And for our, for our notice periods for these special meetings, it's only a 48-hour requirement, so we have that time. We can always set a schedule, and we can always counsel if something happens and pare it back, but if we can go ahead and get some sort of idea of those dates, we can just start with March, because we're going to come back the 1st of April. You know, that's our regular meeting, and we're all, you know, we all have that on our calendar. So, if we can get four dates at minimum worked out somehow in March, we can get that scheduled, and then we'll have something more ironclad after that to send out.
Are the orange ones the one you're proposing?
Orange or yellow. Again, the orange is just a first run-through I did that I thought would be the most preferable date. As much as I like spending time in Assembly Hall, I try not to schedule dates where I knew I would be here for quite a while, because I do have other duties I need to get done outside of Assembly Hall. I almost would, I would take either the yellow or the orange.
It's four o'clock, four, I see up here, two to four. Ever changing the timer?
Can discuss that, I believe, on some level.
I think two was the earliest.
If it would help with attendance. So, I think, I like it, I, so I think, so I think what we're talking about at this point is, hey, let's get March scheduled. Let's reassess during our regular meeting of April and discuss again, maybe get an idea of where we are, what we achieved, and then take another stab of how many meetings you would need during April.
Well, the efficiencies we displayed this evening, we may be done in March. Whoa.
Yeah. Well, no.
I like the optimism, but.
Well, and I think it's a good time that. Well, and I think it's a good time, that comment, it's a good time to thank you for the free work that we all did and for this meeting tonight. I mean, I know everybody put in homework, and I know everybody, you know, watched previous council meetings as well as our own. So thanks to everybody, and I think that's a great point.
There's one variable that's not here. And it seems to be running a lot better.
Oh, goodness, he's probably watching.
Don't mention it, don't mention it.
Can I, may I ask an awkward question? I apologize.
No, please, go ahead, that's what this is for.
So we're operating under an accelerated schedule here. Have any understanding that if we are able to do this and move this forward for the council's approval, that we will not be superseded by action by another body?
Well, we never are, and I think that, but I think from the context that I've gotten from each of you during our conversations, something that rose to the top as well, as Jack may have mentioned today, this is, this is very, very important for our village regardless of, you know, that avenue. And this is, these are required steps for the planning and zoning board, or maybe not necessarily required steps, but these are required steps by staff that staff needs to achieve what their directive is and where they need to bring this. Am I wording or thinking correctly, Alex?
And we and the village will only benefit from as much input as we can from this group. And you can do what you can't, look at the first public hearing, look at the public hearing back in September. Outside of what this board does and comes to a recommendation, outside of that, it's going to be, it's going to be outside of our control or outside of this board's control. But you know you rolled your sleeve, you've put in that work and that effort.
Bruce, I think something else to context of that question is I think a lot of times people don't always know that the work that has to go in place. And I do believe council believes that, I know that we know that. But, you know, outside of these walls, I think that many times people don't know that the work that has to go into this. And I think we're seeing this today. This is requested work that staff believes they need to have happened to complete this. And so us, as in support of them, you know, that's our opportunity to support staff, it's our opportunity to complete it. And then if we can complete this within the certain timeframe, then we're not at fault as a planning and zoning board of being any sort of reason that it would be, you know, withholding the process. And I think that's an important comment to make as well. Is that fair to anybody, to the statement?
Yeah, I'm good with the five orange days. I mean, volunteer to complete tasks, I didn't volunteer for two hours once a month.
Well, I appreciate that, because I think that's what I got, is everybody in our conversations was, if we have to do this, let's do it where we're a little fatigued as a board. And I like the idea of the stopgap in April. Let's reassess, see what we got completed, and let's push forward.
Yeah, for me, it would, so those that have not emailed you, which sounds like a few of us, which includes me, sending you our opinion on these dates, and then also if that time window is decent. But it's not necessarily, I mean, two to four, I guess, is going to be what it is right now unless other times come on the table.
No, no, two to four means for a start date.
We can start anytime between two and four.
Oh, that's, okay, gotcha.
And I'm assuming if it says four, then the room's available at four.
Okay.
Reason we wouldn't want to keep it at four? Does anybody want to start?
The good thing about starting at four, when we get hungry, we tend to get on with it. You know what I mean?
That's true, it's a good point.
Stomach can dictate.
That means we're not going to be set during any of these work sessions, so.
The architectural stuff would take at least six hours.
That's just what architects want you to think.
Yeah.
So the next session, we should be reviewing the large document, multi-page, the big document, which is the Form-Based Code for Village Place, and come with comments, suggestions, changes, and/or approval. We'd like to get out of that meeting approval of that document, is that right?
That would be top.
Okay.
Okay. Two, that would be looking at things that, oh, I thought we discussed specifically one thing or another, or if there's, you know, adding two words as simple as if provided made all the difference. Or if there is something that is just completely objectionable as the board that needs to go. Because that's going to be the beauty part about this being part of a conditional district requirement, is that it's not going to be necessarily the law of the land, that the only avenue away from that is proposing a change to the ordinance itself or going to the Board of Adjustment. It's going to be, well, you can kind of tailor it and adjust it a little bit. So knowing that it's not going to be something other than density or uses. Those are the only two things you can't increase or condition into a use.
Something that would be helpful, I'm sorry, Jack.
I was going to say, we have reviewed every single item in that, is that correct?
Yep.
Including the architectural, I can't remember the architectural standards that are in there.
We all blocked it out.
Design and the planting, is the planting in there? Okay, okay.
Would be helpful to me, as we're reviewing the consolidated document that we have, if there were other, I mean, I've looked at some other Form-Based Codes in other municipalities, but if there were some that you recommended, the staff recommended, that we look at as a way of comparison?
We did that very early on, didn't we?
Yeah, we try. And ours is going to be not akin to anything else. Yeah, largely.
Kathy, feel free. Microphone, Kathy, no, it's okay.
Microphone, sorry about that. We still on? Yes, we are. Okay, if you want to use one that might lend you some sense of direction, try Howlandale Beach, Florida. And in that particular one, it has a very good grouping of how they walk through the regulating plan and the specific uses. And also looked at how you also reference other parts of your code. So, because not everything, you know, the rest of the code still applies.
Right, okay.
I think that's probably a good one. And another thing we would probably also need you to think about is what to call this thing. Because the direction, the path we're kind of going down right now, this document needs to be considered a plan, just like your comprehensive plan, just like your small area plans. Because that's how it's going to become your recommending document when you get into the PDO and you start making decisions. So, so think about if you just want to call it a guidance plan, or if you want to make it part, you could make it part of the land use plan. I think that will be one thing we'll need to add to the agenda.
We, and we're golden, we got some helpful steps in that regard, because the future land use plan or map, or the conservation and growth map in the comprehensive plan specifically calls out these two areas. Focus areas two and four, I believe are the two areas. So we have that to make that connection. It could be, you know, focus area two, Pinehurst South, Form-Based District Plan. I'm throwing some jargon out there. And the same with Village Place. And then we get that interwoven in there.
Find something with some vowels to make a good acronym.
We like an acronym here.
Right.
Super duper good.
Let's discuss doing this, certainly for cadence, if we're requesting four meetings in March. So maybe we continue to keep it the Thursdays down the line. And then if you need four, we discuss maybe the 15th or the 29th. I mean, how does everybody feel about doing that? And if we feel that we already have three people who can make that agenda, and then, of course, we minimum probably need two more.
And I've already gotten, we've gotten Bruce's and Paul's availability, that they just.
Okay. Okay, so Thursday seemed to be a good day.
Need three more.
I'm more likely to make the 29th and the 15th. So the 15th is going to be fairly difficult for me. Now, again, we're not going to be able to tailor this around everybody. But I'm likely to make the 29th and the 30th if you need it, if you need that four meeting for.
Do more.
So you say you would be available on the 29th and 30th?
I can schedule myself 29th and 30th, yes.
But not the 15th?
29th, 29th, and 30th?
Yep, and then is, how does everybody feel about that?
They're all very penciled in for me, but that sounds like where a majority or the most numbers are available. Like you said, we're not going to get all eight.
Yeah.
Yep.
So yeah, you know, that's when we plan on meeting, and if stuff frees up for people, then.
I think the key, of course, is communication, certainly going into that week. What are we going, what are we going to discuss? What's the topic? And we'll make sure we get that from staff, we'll request it. And then what we want to achieve. And then we'll want to make sure that we're discussing as a board if our schedule changes. So I would just hate, why I like that poll is because I would hate to show up, you know, for a meeting, kind of find out we had three or four, or have to cancel the day of. So communication, I think, will be key. And if we, we'll see where we are in April, I think that's a good idea.
All right, so before we send out a poll, again, we want to make sure we're not just, we're actually, we're getting somewhere. Matt, you can just send something to me? Just look at that. And David, what was your?
They're all penciled.
Okay.
Yeah.
His life's about to get crazy.
Right now, and they're twins, and they could be coming any, any week now. So I'm definitely in for the scheduled meeting. Well, I didn't say definitely. I'm planning on being here for the April meeting. Everything else is just, you know, whichever, whichever ones we have the most attendance at, if they're on the schedule, then I'll do my best to make as many as I can.
But right now, right now, based on what we've gotten, we won't be able to establish a quorum until the last two days of the month.
Oh, is that right? So we would not be able to schedule, to establish a quorum on the 9th or the 16th? Is that right? I thought we, okay.
I didn't get, are you, I thought you said you were only available the 29th and the 30th?
No, no, I would be available the night, well, I'd be available, it's possible.
You have three optional yellows in there, 7, 13, 20.
It doesn't have to be an orange.
So are any of the yellows?
Let me ask this. We're not taking any official action or anything. Why do we need a quorum?
We will want action. We want a recommendation by the board.
Official recommendations?
We will, at least the first meeting.
I can do the 9th.
I could do the 9th.
Well, Luis brings up a good point. If we don't have a quorum, can we still do a review and wait for the quorum to do the recommendation?
When we're doing some of the work, like when we start picking up on the table of uses with Pinehurst South or the lot standards with Pinehurst South, those type things, yes.
And have working sessions that do not necessarily have a quorum because we're not doing an official recommendation?
It just won't be an official meeting, so there won't be any official record, there won't be any minutes, there won't be anything like that. It'll just be a.
Is it a working session, though, of a subcommittee? No? Okay.
So right now, it looks like we can do 9th, 16th, the 29th, the 30th, and maybe a little bit more. So we'll send out, based on that, I'm going to throw out a, there's three other options there with the 13th, 15th, and 21st that we might, could still establish a quorum. So that gives us three hard, one opportunity for an extra, and then two other outliers. So that gives us something to go on from this, from the meeting this evening.
Can the staff, you know, help with the schedule? Because, you know, you guys have a lot on your plate other than this, I know.
And that's what, that's what I was hoping for this evening in sending out that calendar, is that we take something broad over the next two months with some orangellos and greens, and then after today, we, and then again, then that burden's going to shift.
I mean, you have a lot of development work to do just to put in front of this group here. I know that, as we move down the road, especially on Pinehurst South.
That's why the order may change a little bit to Village Place to then text and map updates, and then we'll focus back on Pinehurst South.
I think that we, we just, we kind of need to move forward with some dates, kind of a point. And then, you know, unfortunately, in this situation, I think there's going to have to be some fluid situation that changes if we can't pull a quorum. I mean, but I, I'm all for setting the dates and then working towards a quorum for each one.
So what we'll do is we'll send out a poll tomorrow, narrowed with the dates from what we've gotten. And if we can ask that everyone respond by Monday before noon, that way we can get the 48-hour meeting notice that we would have to do in place for Thursday. And then, as things kind of evolve, as you said, get more fluid moving down in the next couple of weeks, we can, we can make adjustments if we need to.
That works, so we're just going to set the 9th today? Is that what I'm hearing, or am I hearing we're going to set the 9th, 29th, and 30th?
We'll send the poll out tomorrow, and then when we get results in by Monday, we'll nail it down.
Nail it down, okay.
We are having a meeting next Thursday, though, right?
Not officially, not yet. But that's what we're, send the poll out tomorrow and then by Monday. Yeah, we're.
We are going to vote on it tomorrow. Like your motivation, Jack.
Everybody's going to. Okay, is that as good as we can get you tonight with that?
That's helpful.
Okay, is that helpful at all? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I have a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second? Second by Sonya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at 6:26 PM.